We got.
I'm gonna stop it here, hold on.
We got.
Everyone will take a moment to review the minutes of the regular meeting of September 20, 2021.
They didn't email out the second. Because I haven't seen minutes. Has it?
To the minutes of the regular meeting of September 20, 2021, are there any additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, I have a motion.
I move to accept the minutes as drafted. This is Ann.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Motion's been made to approve the minutes as presented for the regular meeting of September 20th, 2021. Motion to add a second.
What date should it be? It should be August 16th, Peter.
As the encouragement, use of 16th. The motion to approve, one second. Okay, motion.
I'll make a motion and we table until next month because I need, I need the town to look and make sure they actually are still getting emails to me. I did not receive them. I don't get them as a hard copy anymore. And I usually get them in an email.
That would be.
Okay. So you just need to make sure my address or email address is on the mailing list because I don't remember receiving them.
I did, but I might have the wrong email address.
Okay, so.
Lack of a second. Motion was defeated. First item I have in agenda for this evening is dental contracting. Do we have more to go?
Yes, we do.
Tell us a story.
Do we have, is there a public hearing first?
No. Tell us a story, what we're doing.
Not a public hearing.
Not yet.
Okay.
Okay.
We can be late for the public hearing. You can't, you're set 7:01, but we can be late.
Okay, so we want to just go over the changes that we had from last time?
Yeah.
Peter. Okay, so last time, probably the biggest thing that came up was this, this trade is at 35th Drive. Went down through 197. We were concerned about. Whether we're now able to do anything and partially would be able to change the patent in any way, would be able to. Redirect things or whatever. So we got together with Carlo, Jim and I got together with Carlo and talked about it. We had a conservation easement before. Carlo said we could do the same thing that was done or was supposed to be done in this lot, which apparently wasn't done. Was to have a deed restriction that says the same things that we were talking about. And she was going to get together with our attorney and go over what the verbiage should be for that. And we do have the area shown, reading here, that's, that's what we're talking about. And we don't have any problem, whatever, whatever anybody comes up with, we don't have a problem with that, putting some restriction on that area where that drainage goes through. What? Now, this lot did not have a deed restriction put in, even on the plans it said that they needed to do that. Carlo tells me that that's not, that that's not actually, if it's just out of the plan, it doesn't really mean a lot. He don't necessarily if it's a deed restriction, so. So what we're doing is, I'm waiting, made some changes, you know, instead of deed restriction, instead of conservation easement, showed that area a little better, put some dimensions on it. And down here it just said that we'll put in whatever Carlo or our attorney comes up with in that.
And that is consistent with our usual approach. We have entering the D and we have a notation made on the plot. So it's in both locations.
So another thing that we talked about was the easement for this county driveway here. And we just got, we did talk about that one, remember, Jim and I and Carlo met. And just got an email today from Carlo saying that the verbiage that we had in our easement was acceptable to her. So I think that's, that's done. A couple of other things, it was small, we did get the addresses, lot addresses are right down here. So, and there was enough numbers there, so we didn't have to have letters. So it runs 303, 305, 307, 309. It kind of goes backwards, I guess. I don't know. Maybe, maybe it goes right. Looks like it's backwards to me, but. We had to note that there wouldn't be any other driveways that would come out on 197. The only one would be this county drive because that was another concern at the time. I talked with Jesse about the water, the way that we had the water. He said that this is absolutely fine with him, not a problem. So, you know, he said if somebody needs to know him, have him call me. So. And I understand, I guess Jesse's a foot timer now, so. And the T that we have up here is the same thing that we had before, except for it's just turned sideways before we get it up across. When I talked to Pete before, I told him, he said, whatever, you know, whatever the code requires, that's what we need and that is one of the acceptable ones, the T that's on the side like that. It can either be that, it can be this way, or there's three or four other ones that you can do that are susceptible for a fire chart turning around. And I don't think there was anything else that we had. We were talking about. I think that was it.
Thank you, Gary. In keeping with the comment made by Mr. Robinson. We are receiving a memo that says I have reviewed and shared driveway agreement for the dental contract subdivision within a top of the law. And approval language reserved. We hope that it is necessary that capital to provide a survey and description of a shared driveway to the town. Although such is not a condition of approval for legal review purposes. We got that out.
The only, the only other thing I had in my notes, and I think you, you did verbally reach out to the fire department, didn't you, Gary? Maybe you should put that in the record as well. You know, make a statement as to your time switch.
We, we talked to Pete before about this, Fire Chief.
Yes.
Fire Chief, about the T turnaround and he was good with the T turnaround. So.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Now, in keeping with the requirements, don't allow us to run charges across the state. Word. The other thing, part one, why have an assessment for our contract subdivision? There's a first part of the nominations comments. Gary, now to about the part two. And this board requires participation. Who has two options. First, if you need a commentary, no, a small impact may occur. Or the second is whether it's a large impact may occur. One, the proposed action to create. An interior conflict with adopted land use or determining to regulations. You're not?
I'm not.
Will the proposed action help achieve use or intensive use of land?
No.
No, that's wrong.
I heard no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that causes established method of CEA? You don't have any announced or no. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect the system, such as traffic, flooding or walkway?
No.
No.
Will proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
That was wrong.
Will proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
No.
Public or private wastewater treatment facilities?
No.
No.
Will proposed actions impair the character or quality of or restore archaeological, architectural aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
Will proposed actions result in adverse change to the natural resources such as groundwater, air quality, or farm?
No.
No.
Will proposed actions result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Will proposed actions create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
No.
I think it's a standard form. Okay, we have one successfully completed part one and part two. Now it is imperative for us to determine files. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to our negative declaration for seeking review of the town subdivision.
Motion to make a declaration for dental contracting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And for the discussion. Gary, in silence, would you call a roll please?
Ms. Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Mr. Bouchard?
Yes.
Mr. Sebel?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Hi. I have six. Is that correct?
Pardon?
Six.
Yeah, yeah, we have six attendees, yes.
Motion carries? That was about almost, almost. Now. The reason we're really getting this thing. And that is to conduct a hearing for the dental subdivision. In keeping with our tradition, there are a few ground rules for the hearing. And that is, that if anyone wishes to make a comment or ask a question concerning this project, you are encouraged and invited to do so. Number two, it's been elected. If you do have to comment, make a question to ask, who would like to enter the state committee so for record keeping purposes only. So then in the future, if a question comes up, John Smith said, rather than, well, somebody said it, it's more appropriate. And third, and probably most important ground rules of the whole thing, throughout this whole process, we must maintain some sense of decorum. To that, when someone adds a question or comment to make concerning this application. You got a little more, is that easy?
Well, we, I, I don't see anybody here in, in attendance. We do have one person online. But I don't know if that person is here for this or not. If you are, please unmute yourselves and raise your hand and we'll address your, your question or your comment. And I don't see them on mute, unmuting or. Hold on, let me see here. Hold on, I can't hear the speaker. Okay. Mr. Jakowski, are you in attendance for this public hearing? I wrote him a note asking if he, if he wishes to speak on this subdivision. I'm waiting for a reply.
Hold on a minute.
Yeah, in the meantime, can we?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. I'll, I'll let you know.
I, I just have a question about the.
Let's do it.
Left line for ten, on lot number three, and you've got the deed restricted area where the lot is, and there's a, on the map, it says deed restricted area, C note, right? I think earlier you were talking about what you were identifying as the notice, but is there some wording that? But is there, is there any particular wording being on what's here in this detail?
Not yet. Carlo is supposed to be working with our attorney to come up with a verbiage that needs to go in the D.
Okay, so the final word will be on the D, but as far as the subject or analogy here, there will be.
Right, yes, yeah, yeah. And again, we don't, we don't really care what it says. We just, we just want to make sure that we get it done right and it's good and.
Glad you raised that. See, the deed restriction basically protects that stormwater system from being tampered with by the person that owns the lot through.
Right.
There's nothing on this map anywhere that says how anybody can access that if there's a need to maintain or fix damage in that system.
And that's what the attorneys are figuring out, but.
Okay.
The same thing, what we talked about at the meeting was like, you know, there's, we, we have this kind of here. We don't know who's going to maintain it, right? This is the same thing we went over a claim of work last time. Is, do we want to mention somebody who is going to maintain it? And Carlo agreed that they'll do that. We should just say that if somebody was down the road or somebody who needs to maintain this, that there'll be a lot of access. So that's where we're heading with it, but the two attorneys want to come up with certain, who believes us. Since your turn.
Which I guess my, my concern is, is before we're done on the plan, it will say that access has to be granted to.
Yes. Yes, yes.
So that's all I have. I got a handful of other ones. Do you want an easy one first? Where's the nearest, should I put it using? Yes, sir. Where's the nearest fire ladder?
The fire ladder is right in front. You'll see it right there.
I saw it on the other map and I couldn't find it tonight on this one, so I thought you would set it right out there.
Yeah.
So question number two, how long is this driveway to the furthest access to a lot?
Hmm. I want to say it's like 200, it's almost 300.
It's under 300.
I don't know, it is under 300.
Do you know where I'm going with this?
But I got a skate.
Because if it's over 300 feet, 15 feet wide does not have a state law.
Oh, it's, it's 15 feet wide means what? The width of it?
The width of the pavement is listed on the diagram here as 15 feet, and if it's more than 300 feet wide, it has to be more long.
Yes, mine says 20 now.
Does it? Okay. Mine says 15.
I know, I know.
So if yours says 20 and that's what I was going to say, then it's a point how long did you already met that requirement?
Right, that's right.
Okay. I do. Well, that's very easy. What's like this tweet? Okay, there's a note on the diagram here of the driveway where access is 197. And the note says, stop sign and stop bar only if required by New York State DOT. Have you ever known New York State DOT require a stop sign on a driveway?
No, I don't think they would.
Okay, so I don't know why the notes on the plans, but I absolutely kind of want to see a stop sign.
You would?
I would not want to see a stop sign. It's a driver.
Well, see what happens is, when I, when I talked to DOT initially, I talked to the regional guy, and he said that, and he was fairly new there. And he said you need to call a girl down on 50 Wolf Road. So she pointed me out to a certain, you know, detail that she wanted on the plan, which is what we have.
Okay.
And that's what it says, so.
Well, it's just, it's a stop sign, not, it looks like we're okaying right over in that driveway.
Right.
I'm sure there's no other driveway beyond 197.
We don't want to put a, we don't want to put a stop sign in, we don't want to put a road sign in, we don't want to do anything. We just want it to be a driveway.
It'll fall out, this one's easy. Mail.
Mail.
You have three or four houses on one driveway. All right, my understanding from the United States Postal Services and Development, they will not be delivering door to door anymore. They wish not to. I'm assuming this is going to have mailboxes on 197?
I'm thinking that's what we'll do, yes.
So each one can be, you know, lot 303, 305, 307, 309, right there, or maybe on one bank?
That could be.
Why would they, like, one bank before the driveway or something so that it's not?
I think that would be attractive for us also to have it at one bank.
Okay.
If you want, we can add it, show it on the plan.
I, I don't have to see it, but maybe, maybe you could call the postal service and just ask them whether they would defer it once or. But that's up to you, I just.
Of course, we would do that anyway, yeah.
What's that?
We would do that anyway.
Yeah, I'm just saying for, for your discretion, just being proud of someone, but that's all I have.
And they were all easy.
They were all easy.
That's just easy, well.
That is short.
I have one more as well. I see how here the residential driveway detail lower left.
Yes.
That's where the driveway, the note, the note of the driveway says proposed county drive 15 foot A width.
Right.
See that?
Yeah.
Then over in the lower right of the plaza block, you've got a cross section to the ground.
Right, so.
How far is it A and? What part is red? So it seems like there's a concept here that you would have 20 feet wide in both, as you said.
Like I said, I don't know, you think that, but, but what I have is approved with, 20 foot approved with, but. I think DOT requires us to do it up to the property line. But again, they, you know, when we talk to them, they're like, yeah, you know, we got a million things to do. When you're ready to do this, send us down the plan, we'll take a look at it, we'll approve it, so.
But your, your intent is to pay what DOT tells you you have to pay, but that's still the way we're at.
Right. And I'm not sure that that may not change down the road. Maybe they get to that point and they decide, maybe we do want.
A long way to go, but certainly we can pay it. I'm just trying to stay right here with what we respect.
At what point are you going to apply for your, for your driveway permit? Is it before you apply for building permit?
You have to read.
Well, I, you would think. I just want, I just want it on the record.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I think once, once we get approval for the plans, then we go to try to get our permits, so we would bring, bring it right down to DOT and talk to that, I don't remember those names.
I, I just think that's worthy of, as a condition, that the highway permit be provided at the time of the first building permit.
Mr. Martin, you're there.
Yeah, he did write, he did write his comment through, and it was in two parts. He, he says, "Our only concern with the dental project is the high water table. The last three years or so, it has risen approximately four feet when taken at my well site. People pumped, but not lately." And then he went on to say, "Something's wrong with the speakers, et cetera." His name is John Jakowski, 34 Gray Fox Drive. He has to sign off, "Sorry, but no complaints if the stormwater system for the subdivision goes," and then he said goodbye. So I said, "Thanks again," and I will read your comment into the record. So that's all that he said. So it seemed to center on the stormwater and the water table and so on and so forth.
Well, and what I can see is that we were out there as part of the project, we're at, we went out there and we did test holes on each of the lots. For, for a couple of reasons. Number one, because the town row has a requirement on how far the foundation needs to be above the sea's high groundwater. And because the sewage systems have similar requirements, a little different. We have a turbine up here on, on their town, the exit of the vision plan. And we have some little codes there that are outlined below, but we did give the surface elevation and test hole where they are on the lots. Give the, the bottoming depth, where we all know bottoming is very, it's, we will soil rust. And then we also have the. Bottoming depth, the bottoming elevation, footing base elevation, and the heat field surface elevation. So we brought them to the beginning here. When we did our plan, which, you know, is just a, just a plan to show that everything fits on a lot. We put an elevation in here that will keep us above everything with a house, with a heat shield and, and such, so. I mean, we, we did that. Blue Neil was out there for the county, Matt was out there for the town when we did that. We did the best we could, I think it was going to happen, so those houses are going to be higher than the ones that are next door.
And you will have erosion and sediment control plans, you know, for each lot of.
Which is, which is, that was, that was part of the plans, right? We did to force it, force you to set two of the sheets around and store more.
Okay.
Are there any other differences between what I have received for this?
No.
Plan and what you've got there other than the one though?
That would be the last thing that ended up getting done, and it must not have just made the, made the press to have you guys.
Does any further public hearing?
We have no other people online.
No one else? All of you are closed? Or? What would you like to know? All right, I have something else. If you're comfortable with a preliminary approval, do you want to know that again?
I was waiting. Jerry's still moving his notes around.
I was just, I was just reading something.
So I was getting ready to make a motion for preliminary approval, but I want to make sure because I want to, you have the conditions. There's only one condition parceled out, so I'd like to make a motion that we grant preliminary approval for dental. Dental contracting LLC subdivision. With conditions as Jerry has.
Well, I think that was the driveway. The drive, the driveway permit be provided at the time of the first building permit for the project, is so. Condition.
Yeah, since we're bringing our motions into our condition, I don't know why it's over that crazy machine picture.
Okay. Well, the condition is that, that the driveway permit be provided at the same time the first building permit for the project is submitted.
So while we're on the driveway, that it be a minimum of 20 feet wide. Don't care what age, myself don't care to age or asphalt, but it must be 20 feet wide considering. Don't care what age, myself don't care to age or asphalt, but it must be 20 feet wide considering its length.
Yeah, this is Ann. Uh, if, if we could also add, as a condition, you know, prior to final approval, that we have an opportunity to review the deed restriction language that's being proposed.
Yes. I was getting to that, Ann, but thank you. That was my third.
Okay.
Because right now that's in talks, and we understand that, but before we do final approval, we'd like to see that.
Can I make one comment on that?
The time would turn out. You gotta, you gotta tell us who you have, well, we're on March 2, I'm a partner at the business. And I just wanted to clarify, because I kind of had a feeling this was gonna come up, and I believe Carla's letter clearly states that that should not be a condition of final approval that Mr. Jensen just read before us. That has to do with the driveway and the way we correct?
No.
I believe so, not desired.
Shared driveway.
That was just a shared driveway you read. No, there's nothing from Carla, we have nothing from Carla saying. In fact, Gary's already told us that this is still in talks, they're trying to figure out the word, Carla consent, it says, "Don't make a condition if it wasn't, if it wasn't cleared on." Okay, so. I know it's a pain, but this is important, okay? If this doesn't get done now, then it becomes a problem, and it doesn't become Dento's problem. Because that will all be done, be long gone, and somewhere 10 years down the road, somebody's gonna try and figure out how to get in there if something goes wrong with that stormwater system. So. That's my motion, those three things.
Well, second here, you have a second.
I'll second that, this is Ann.
Yeah? What is this here, I'm beginning to recognize. Listen, then maybe second me for a discussion. If not, is it called rule?
Ms. Matias?
Aye.
Mr. Arnold?
Aye.
Ms. Purdue?
Yes.
Mr. Bouchard?
Aye.
Mr. Siebel?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
I have a 16th amendment, um, of yours. Or is there anything else I'd like to do?
Do we have a vote right now?
Do we have? Do we have a desire to have these folks come back for a signing, or do you wish to take care of that now?
We want a condition that there's certain things that have to be done before we do final approval, that was the motion. So we're not gonna be making the third week, so can, can we talk about that a little more?
We can talk, I mean, no, we're really here now, we're all about it.
So far, you're.
Go ahead.
Um, obviously, the stuff with Carla, that's gonna be something that, you know, she's, she's gonna do, and none of us are gonna change what that is, and she's, she's gonna work with our attorney, and they're gonna come up with some, but it has to go on there. Uh, they know, she knows exactly what, you know, we were talking about, I mean, she's not with Jim and I. Um, so I mean, I think that she's, you know, she's got, she knows exactly what she's doing, and I don't know that either you or I, or anybody's gonna change their mind from what goes on, so. I'm just thinking, it wouldn't be horrible if that was a condition of final approval, I know you love seeing you both. You know?
Okay, so for safety, do you remember when this proposal, or when this development first came in front of this board?
It's been a while, I guess I do.
Months, right?
Yes.
And then the very first meeting, do you remember me asking about access to this stormwater?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So it's been months that this needed to be worked out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I would agree with you, I, I trust Carla to do a good job of it, but I also don't approve things that aren't done. So we put a condition on it, which is what we did.
Right.
Okay. And what you're asking is for us to make a condition that it's upon Carla working on the details.
Right. And you would go to, you would go to find out with the same condition, it doesn't go anywhere till the condition's taken care of.
You're, you're in discretion, Gordon.
This is Ann, I, I agree with John, and I, I also have a lot of confidence in Carla, but there's a lot of latitude in terms of what might be incorporated in this restrictive covenant, and I think that we need to see it and have an opportunity to weigh in on it as well.
Okay. Gordon, you approve? If not, then you want to play the double? And ask if you want to put forth a motion to a final approval, or if you prefer to wait to see everything that we have questioned the attitude of the board, which yours is work, we've got nine or more decisions. Uh, just make some direction about it. Well, I'm gonna press you up the walls.
Well, I can only speak for myself, this is not my first go around with this stormwater, huh? Okay, and this is the last chance to get it over. The last time it was in front of us on Gray Fox Court, it was, oh, don't worry about it, it's attached to remaining lands, and it'll always be attached to that, and there'll always be access to it, and now we're doing this. It has nothing to do with the current outcome, I'm sorry that it falls in your lap. But if it's not done right, it's an absolute mess. Okay, so my position on it is simple, I trust Carla one hundred percent, but I'd like to see them writing that, and I'm sorry if that's gonna hold up progress a few weeks. I liked the project, I really do, I liked it since I first saw it, I think it's the best use for that parcel. It's just, from the very first thing, I said, we gotta do something with this stormwater retention paper. It's not even retention paper, this pond that handles stormwater, not necessarily a breakaway, just to be sure that it's never a problem and asphalt. Okay, I don't know who's gonna maintain it, but I have to guarantee that somebody can get in there and do something without having to go to court, wait a year, or whatever, to try and get in. So, myself, I'd like to see it cemented, and I'd like to see it with my own eyes what Carla writes up about it. That's my take on it.
Just, just so you don't think that nothing was done the whole time, because we had, I'm thinking we're reading, or we talked about what we're gonna do with it, and we're gonna put a conservation thing in that, and that a, a deed restriction. So we, that's what we had done, and that was on the last set of plans that you guys saw. So, don't think that we weren't doing anything on that, it just.
I, I wasn't saying nothing, it's one of the, the problems, is we had a lot of time for this to be worked out, months, it's about six or seven months that there'd been, and this could be worked out, okay? It was a known problem from that very first meeting, and I, I would hope that I made it very clear at that very first meeting, that was a sticky question. Now, if you wanna go ahead and, and if somebody on the board wants to reestablish the motion and make it without that condition, I'll go, no, but I'll be, I may only be the only one. Maybe everybody else holds yes on it, and it moves ahead, okay? But I need to see that that's, that is taken care of, myself, so.
Let me ask you one question. With what the town attorney, this is our story, will the town attorney comes up and provides to you, that we've shown us the process that we're doing, does the board have any jurisdiction to vote against what the town attorney says to our attorney?
Of course, we, we, we asked her, we asked her for guidance, but she's not. She's not a member of this board, she doesn't get a vote at all, but she is, of course, our legal authority, so we do listen to her legally. So do you guys to tell us now what we want on leave then? I'm not sure I understand.
You could, you're telling us that we're waiting on what a description needs to be on the deed, right? So, does that allow, that's why I'm confused, but I guess.
Well, I, I actually, I actually, I actually addressed this months ago, what I wanted to see, but that apparently wasn't okay, and that's all right, I let that go. I wanted to see a deed in right of access on lot three. Which I didn't think was a big deal, uh, all I was really saying is I wanted in the deed that if somebody needed to go check that pond or maintain it, they could get to it. Okay, apparently that could be done, and that's okay. I just wanna make sure, I don't care how it is, as long as if something needs to be done there. All right, and there's a historical problem with that stormwater system, has nothing to do with your subdivision at all, I'm sorry. But there is a historical problem there that has been issued in the past and required maintenance, and it could require it in the future, and we're allowing the subdivision that will lock that stormwater system into an area that is not accessible to anybody without permission from that, that lot. So that's why we're asking for something to be on the deed that says they have to grant that. Okay? Honestly, it's not ideal, right? It, it's not ideal coming into it, I mean, it wasn't ideal the last time the subdivision was done. And what I asked then wasn't done either, because I wanted to attach the gray core, so that they could actually go right from subdivision, but. So we're just trying to make sure it's right, I'm sorry if it holds it up, I really am. Like I said, if somebody would like to make that motion and change it, they're welcome to.
So, is the consensus of the board on the main to try to determine if it's possible before we move forward, if I have? If that's the case, I have a phone call.
It is in the last motion, is the condition? It's the condition in the last motion. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The condition was that before we would grant.
Final.
Final approval, that we wanted, we, the board wanted to review the deed restriction line.
Carla, where? Okay, so I think you see, I can hear the advocate, uh, you see the position that everyone's standing here, and right now, we're live, we're stuck, we're not gonna change. As soon as all those legal people can get to your consent, if I run, that's where it is. One of the other questions you possibly turn around and forward, Spirit, what?
Uh, I don't think so, I think we talked about everything I had. A few things we didn't, like, that's all right. All right, thank you very much.
The next one I have for the segment is Hoffman, you have one more?
That can work with you. Are you not, is that gonna work with yourself?
I think it is.
All right, Travis Mitchell, environmental design partnership, here to discuss the Hoffman car wash at 1387 Route Nine. Here with Autumn Graham from, you speak great, man. Talk about traffic, but we'll, we'll get to, also, Tom Hoffman and Marty Andrews with Hoffman Building Corporation. Um, we were last here in June, you saw Gavin Bailey from my office, uh, give some initial presentation for you. Gavin happened to be double tonight, so we're just about to mainly try and get through it. Um, this is, we were, I think, before Gavin was here in June, we were here, uh, of January, February, for the subdivision of this parcel, this is opposite, uh, Route, uh, 197, Route Nine. Um, showing a view just for the, uh, overall map to get, get the general location, site's located here in Yellow, this is Route Nine, and here's 197. This is the property that's directly across the street, it's the old auto repair. So, looking at that, again, sort of the tip of the arrow, it's in your C1, uh, Commercial Dining District. Uh, in, in aerial with the overlay of this particular parcel showing here in Yellow. Um, you'll remember that subdivision, I don't have the overall subdivision, but it was, I think, a three lot of this overall piece, and it was consideration for some type of future access down the road. Um, for tonight, we're just here to discuss this 1.65 acre parcel outlined in Yellow. Um, you'll remember also as a condition of that subdivision, that the building that was there, a mound, which has, uh, has been removed. So we can generally, we're left with the site as it is, with, uh, some vegetated, used to be grass up there, some woods in the back, and, uh, some, still some asphalt that, that is surrounding that building. This is the, uh, detailed site plan that's been submitted to you, and this is Route Nine across the bottom, uh, site of 197 here. And this intersection, which I want to both keep you about here coming up, has been, uh, has been configured. Uh, we can appropriately opposite for 197 here, um, to handle future flow, which can, uh, come in something, some later date out here, we're coming in into our parcel right at this location, being circular on the car wash. This is the car wash building here, it's a 6,500 square foot building, with connections to municipal, uh, water and sewer. Water is, um, on the side of Route Nine currently, and of course, sewer project is underway. This is the site that I know of, that Google Earth, the aerial image, in case you're questioning how that lays out coming up. Uh, I just wanted to turn it over to the one, quickly to talk about.
Yes. Again, we'll, our AP, we looked for, are looking at the traffic for this site right now. We're still in the preliminary stages of the project, as far as the traffic evaluation goes. Uh, the pro, pro side is, of course, on the northwest side of the intersection Route Nine and 197 in the town. Um, with access directly opposite 197 at the traffic signal. Yeah, thanks. So, the primary site, uh, evaluation is being completed at that line of site intersection, civilized intersection of Route Nine and 197, which is DOT jurisdiction. So of course, that's, we'll be working very closely with them when it comes, comes time for construction and permitting, uh, with the site, and working with the traffic signal itself. Turning movement traffic count, so intersection traffic volumes, we're collecting on Thursday, August 12th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and then on, on August 14th, a Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., just to get an idea of what the existing traffic volumes are in the area for those peak conditions. Um, for, uh, the car wash facility like this, we do a Saturday instead of like an a.m. peak hour, because it's very rare for anybody, just to, you know, it's time to head out to car wash it, you know, 7:00 o'clock in the morning. So, um, we look at both the weekday p.m. peak hour and the Saturday midday peak hour, and what we look at when it comes to the traffic counts themselves, our passenger vehicles, heavy vehicles, some trucks, um, buses, bicyclists, pedestrians, um, and then all the users of the intersection itself. I know when I was out there recently, I saw bicyclists up and down because of the, the route problem here on 197 as far as, uh, usage of the intersection. We've obtained traffic information as far as the traffic signal goes from New York State DOT, so we can kind of look at the operations of the signal and the capacity of the signal itself, as far as what the signal can accommodate with heads and, um, and things like that. Also looking at DOT traffic volume information as far as traffic volumes on the adjacent roadway system. Sure you all know Route Nine and both 197 are nicely heavily, uh, trafficked routes specifically here in the town. So if you're looking south of 197, there's roughly 20,000 vehicles per day. North of 197, about 11,000 to 12,000 vehicles per day, and then on 197 itself, roughly 9,000 vehicles per day, um, on those roadways. So you're seeing it's just split as you get to 197. Okay? So as part of the future conditions, what we're actually analyzing, uh, we're looking at the future conditions over with and without the proposed project. So, um, we had an opportunity to speak with Jim about a bunch of other stuff that's going on in the town right now. Um, the three residential subdivisions there of, you know, roughly 130, 140 lots, uh, the 5,000 square foot all fresh matchmar, and then the 8,000 square foot office building that's kind of south of Exit. And then the 8,000 square foot office building that's kind of south of Exit 17, but still has the potential to add a trip here or two to the network. We also looked at historical traffic lines to determine a growth rate for the study area. The historical data actually showed something a little less than the 1%, but we understand that there's the infrastructure that's going in along Route 9. So we wanted to make sure we increase that just a little bit to account for anything, any stragglers that might come in over the next year. The project is expected to be completed and operational in 2022, so there would be a lot of that impact, but we certainly don't want to miss that when we're projecting future traffic lines. The proposed project is a roughly 65,000 square foot kind of single unit car wash. And when we look at the trip generation estimate for that, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. Right now, the current edition is the 10th edition for that. They're very close to coming out with the 11th, so maybe influx as we're working our way through the project. But during the PM peak hour, the average is about 78 total trips during the PM peak hour, 50% entering and exiting. And then during Saturday peak hour, around 41 trips, 19 entering and 22 exiting.
Why do you think we've been remembered on trip?
It's just because it takes, they might be taking a little bit longer to go through at that time. I was expecting a 50/50 split too, but the data is showing that it's slightly off. I maybe see people are factoring a little longer at that point. I don't, I don't know. But that is what the ITE data shows. And since the 11th edition is coming out during kind of this time that we're going to be working through the project, we'll also double check with that most recent data to see if anything has adjusted in the, in the background data from, from ITE. So like we said, we're really in kind of the data gathering stage and we haven't finished the analysis at this point, but what we'll be able to see next time we're together is a completed traffic evaluation that gives you the levels of surface at that study intersection during the existing and no build condition and then under the build condition to see what it looks like with their proposed project. We'll also look a little bit at queues specifically on site, just confirming that the spacing between the site driveway and, and 197, it's far as to be a Route 9 is sufficient for what's anticipated starts operations of the traffic. Sorry, I know that was quick. Are there any questions? It was just such a quick overview of where we are, which is not very far.
What juncture do you anticipate going to the state with this data and, and for the, for the permit?
So essentially, as soon as we finish up the traffic impact study, we would submit typically to DOT at the same time that we submit to the town unless it's preferable from a town's perspective for you to do that coordination. But we find that the sooner we can get into DOT, the better.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting, yeah, that would be fine, right?
So with this one, it's a three-stage permit. So because the JWG has a couple different highway access permits, one of them is the Purb 33, which is pretty basic. That's kind of what you see for your previous project that was up, right? It's just a driveway permit, no big deal. When we're doing a commercial development like this one, we have to use the Purb 33 COM, which is a three-stage. So you, first you submit to them your traffic study and your conceptual plan. And then at that point, they get their opportunity to kind of comment on the traffic study itself. And then depending upon any type of comments and certainly making sure you have municipal approval, the next step is the actual design of what has to be done for the access itself. So.
Do you agree with that?
Well, because it's, yes. Right? Because of this one coming in and adding the signal itself, there is what have to be worked on the active signal. Right? Right now it's flashing red on the opposite side. Most likely that can kind of just be turned back on to three color operation, but that's one of the things we have to confirm with the state. And one of the things that they have to agree to and say, yeah, that totally makes sense. Let's do that. The H P, you're the best. I totally love your, your presentation here. But yeah, we'll talk to DOT at the same time we, we submit to the town.
When do you think your traffic study will be done? So you, when would you take that first step to the state? Sorry.
So I would anticipate our report will probably be done within about the next two weeks for applicant review. And then we get to send it to you folks and have it, and you have, you have early meetings, so we should have that in place prior.
But I think it would be efficient and most informative is when you do that, if you can share that on a concurrent basis with myself and whatever you send to the state.
Yes.
So I, I mean, I'm not looking to try and, you know, be the lead here. I just want to be in the loop. So as, as the information is exchanged and we get feedback, I'd like to keep that, that triumvirate of, you know, the town, the state and yourself, you know, so we get the information.
As long as you're comfortable with us doing the.
No, yeah, no, I'm more than comfortable, at least from the staff point of view here that I function that I play, I'm more than comfortable with that. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're in the loop and I understand what's going on and when and all that kind of thing.
Yeah. So at the state within the permitting department, they had some recent turnover. So at the beginning of the summer, Tina Crowley left and went to a different division. They now have a new, so Guy DeSoto's been there for years, right? He's great. We've worked with him for a long time. Ken Davis is now also in the permits department. He's new, so he's only been at it a month or so, but Guy's a good trainer. So they'll, between the two alone, you'll, you'll have some good folks to work with there. And they're really great about, we just keep everybody copying on what we're doing. Like if we send it directly to Guy, I'm going to copy you, Jim, and whoever else at the town.
So what I'm interested, like one of the early things I'm interested to know is the, the current, you know, operations of that intersection and that signal. It seems to me like it's one of those things, you know, most times it's okay, but when it's stressed, it is stressed. And it, and it's, and it's not functioning very well, you know, during that peak hour. And I, if you were there from 4:00 to 6:00, you saw.
So I worked on.
I mean, it's so bad that this work that they're doing on interchange, they're lengthening the, the off-ramp because they're getting traffic backing up on the interstate and they really don't like that.
Oh, oh, no. Don't back up on I, it's not nice.
They don't like that because then, then F, F, then FHWA becomes involved and they're not nice people.
You don't think so?
No, I don't.
They're super easy to work with.
Hell, yeah. Not my experience, but.
So if I could ask one question?
Sure.
But you gave a great presentation. It was fast, it was understandable. However, some things define me. If I understood it correctly on the one slide, you're proposing a traffic impact of 39 cars in and 39 out on a peak. There'll be the 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock PM peak hour times or 4:00 to 5:00 PM.
Yeah, whichever one, yeah.
Is, is that? Is this particular, because this is just the automatic car washes, and I realize there's a certain speed, is that like limited by the speed the car wash can go? That it's really only going to be 39 cars? Or is that like average and it might be a little more, it might be a little less?
So my data is based upon I T E information. So mine is a compilation of like nationwide and in general information when it comes to more site specific and operation specific. I know that the folks from Hoffman's are, could give you more information on that as far as operating and processing through the wash itself.
And aren't they talking about chip trips generated? That somebody leaves their house and goes to the car wash?
Yes.
It doesn't.
So it's not, so that's unique trips. That's not somebody who's on their way by and they're pulling.
Right.
Oh, no, within, within any pass by.
So this, this is my concern with the intersection. And I'm not DOT, I'm not, you guys be experts, I'm just telling you what my concern is, is a good number of those people that get into your hour are going to be turning left.
If they're, which would be essentially a pass by trip, right? If it's somebody who's coming north and they decide, I'm stopping it.
Exactly.
Right?
On my way home from work.
Yeah, I'm on my way home from work.
And I've got my monthly pass.
Exactly.
But every one of our car washes, we're busy in the middle of the day not during rush hour.
Okay.
Well, certainly how much of our people are rushing to work and rushing around?
So I guess that was as much as I did know if this was something that was generated by the, by the traffic study software or if it was something that was personal. You guys have these all, so you bring expertise.
Yeah, we're slow at the beginning of the day and we're slow at the end of the day. Especially when it's dark out, when it's dark out, it drops off those.
I mean, it's not, it's not a sticky point. I mean, if left, if left turn becomes a problem, then DOT just needs to fix that. It just need to put a left turn lane in or a left turn signal or something that fixes that problem. So I'm not saying it's a problem, just that would be the only thing that I could see to be an issue there is winding up cars, turning left and going to your place. And you're saying that really people don't, I don't go to a car wash, so I would have known, but you, you're saying people don't really go. I'm sorry.
You need to recruit yourself.
But wait a minute, you got to make up for those of us to do it all the time.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm more like Jerry than anything like that. Now, this is going to be, the one in Latham, is it Latham that just opened up?
Yeah, it's near the runway.
Yeah, near the, kind of like near the airport.
Identical.
Oh, yeah, I just went by it. Beautiful. So I just went by it Saturday. Gorgeous.
And this is Ann. I have a quick question, and that is whether the, the trans, traffic analysis is going to consider whether the road capacity on site can handle the demand? And that is so there's not going to be a backup on Route 9?
Yes, we will be looking at the operations of the intersection to confirm, you know, what the potential is impacted.
That's exactly what we're looking, that's the whole point.
That's exactly what we're looking at. And one of the things, because, I mean, all three approaches existing to the intersection are DOT. They are not going to want to see degradation, generally speaking.
78 is not a little number.
It's not tiny, but you figure it's, it's one every 30 seconds or so.
Yeah, that's not a little number.
So we are definitely going to be working with DOT and with you folks to make sure that the impact is manageable or potential impact is manageable.
I don't know, maybe, maybe I had the, my question might be the same as the one you discussed. I was more curious about the, the queuing area.
Yeah.
And I mean, look, I, I do, I, I go to your car washes and it's always, well, I'm one of the very go-go in there at times, everybody else comes, so I see. Do, you know, you guys have a lot of business, so that's okay. I just, do you, do you figure in the, the car capacity into the size of that queuing area that you're proposing?
Could you go back? Yeah.
Our Saratoga site is over one acre, your Boston Spire's over one. And, you know, this is 1.6 acres. We also, you know, the, the entrance is down the roadways and it wraps around the building. There's all that queuing. This is one of our bigger sites that will have lightly, very little.
But I would just think that that would be to me something like, I would, I would like to have some idea of, you know, the ability of that, that queuing area that handles the capacity of the cars.
And that's, that's, that was in my staff notes about the idea of the entrance driveway off the new road being further north. So you, you would provide more queuing on the, on the site road coming in and the queuing in the.
Right.
Further, your site, I'm sorry, further, no, north, north.
Northwest.
Northwest, okay.
Yeah.
And we've pushed that really as far away from the intersection here as it works with the flow on the site. And so as, as Tom was kind of looking here, you've got, when you come in, you've got a little bit of the second here, but then they wrap all the way around. And this is where the automated tellers are up on the.
I can, I, I would imagine that's going to be a question out of DOT is, you're not going to want to see queuing extending to Route 9.
Of course.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, the other thing to consider is there's a high level of visibility from the street. So when people see a line, they don't stop and they'll look about another time. So if you guys.
No, I, I agree 100%. I, I go to car washes all the time, so if I see a line, I'll, I'll, I'll do it next time.
Okay, okay. Jim, this will allow us with the three lanes coming in and a lot will have that in a report for queuing, stacking of how many cars. And just eyeballing it right here, I would say it's going to be between 25 cars on the lot waiting to get in. I mean, that's what we're going to be able to, to have there, which is on average even probably more than some of our places. I think that's more of a risk.
Well, when you put it in scales of, so you said 70 trips per hour?
So you've got 40 coming in and 40.
So just, so, and you said how many cars, 28?
I would say we've got like 25.
So three quarters of those cars can be on site?
Yes.
So once you, so that's, that's the, that's what I suppose of that. That's people going from home to, not people pulling it off the highway. Home like Jared has.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as what you're talking about, the pass by trip, right? You're like, ah, okay. So we're not taking any type of credit for that. So we're looking at that there, we're not counting on any pass by trips. That we're just saying that these are new trips. So we would, you know, subtract out for the.
I, I didn't even know your one in Clifton Park, which has got to be one of your busier ones on Route 9. And I don't think I've ever seen 25 cars in a queue there.
Well, listen, if somebody's pulling in, there's probably somebody else leaving. So that's why, you know, the queue keeps moving and we're very productive and.
And of course, that's, that one's got multiple access points too. That one's got.
I think the longest I never seen is the one in Saratoga by Lowe's where it wraps around the building.
Right on. That's one of my ideas.
But I give no sense of how many cars.
Right. And what's, since you brought that up, was that way over at Clifton doesn't have a teller, all right? The three lanes, it has just one lane. So that's why it's slower over there because we don't have a, we do expand.
You've got three feed lanes coming in up the side there?
Yes.
Well, that's a good one. Wait.
Yep.
Yeah, right, yes. We have a membership pass, if you have a membership pass, the gate is open there. So it just keeps moving.
I, I gotta get, I gotta give you guys credit. The, 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 the architecture on the building is, I mean, that one in Latham is, it's, it's an asset. It really is. It's an asset to the landscape.
And since we've mentioned it a couple of times, I'll jump to it. This, this is the, this is the.
It looks just like that.
Yep. And so this, this would be, you know, looking to the west, north, I guess, back towards, so back toward Route 9. So Route 9, you back out here, your entry is, is coming in this way.
Yeah, I was saying, Jim, when I saw the plans the first time, I thought about when we were looking to rewrite our code 20 years ago. And a couple of the people on the board were saying, we need architectural review, we need architectural review. And it's like, so what does it mean? And they said, well, you pick a theme. And, you know, if you have a theme and you say you want all the buildings, the new buildings to look like this, you can kind of everything look right and look like it belongs. We couldn't come up with a theme. I saw this and I said, there's your theme. I mean, this is, this looks nice.
You, you, you know it when you see it.
Yeah.
And I'll play it for you. And it, it looks exactly like that. And that one in Latham is beautiful.
Just a, a couple of other comments, just, just random things I can think of. I know it's early, but I see there's six employee parking spots. Is that, that's a maximum number you'd have for an operation like this?
Yeah.
I know the automated gates help, right? I'm sure.
If it's six or a shift, and so they'll have all day shifts and then.
How many hours a day do they operate?
We're open from approximately 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the summer and then 7:00 p.m. in the winter. Open at 7:30 on a Saturday morning, a little earlier. So the cell serve bathrooms are closed at night, so there's nobody hanging around.
Jim, I have a question for you. We, we delved in the, the original car wash building being too close to the modern fault. Is there an issue, and this has nothing to do with you guys, that's why I'm asking, Jim, I'm sorry to take some of your time, but is there a issue with the part of the former Suzuki dealership that's so close to that road? And we're allowing the road to be built that close to that building?
So what we had talked about there during the subdivision process, if you remember, was that the, the portion of this building that was on this piece had to come down.
Yes, exactly. But that was because of the lot.
Yep. Yep. And if, if and when this section of road were, were to be dedicated to town road, then this piece of this building would no longer meet that setback.
So for now, it's a private.
As a private driveway.
Private driveway for the work project, are you leasing that access, put your private drive on? Is that, is that close to traffic?
I don't know, I'm saying of, of the way it is for now, eventually, as soon as, you know, something else develops here, that'll have to come back.
Yeah, I mean, I would see it as a, as a problem other than it's really close to that road.
Well, you are right, Guy. If that, if that were a road, that building would have to come down immediately because it would violate the setback.
Is that also something that if, if for some reason it is available for sale, Suzuki dealership is sold in order for them to get to meet requirements for site plan, that would also have to trigger that coming down or not?
Not, not as long as it's a, a driver.
Okay, all right, okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
I'll just jump through a few more slides here if any other questions. I'll just jump through a few more slides here, if any other questions. Just, we're gonna show the ready plan here, all stormwater man, and then you've got a plan in front of you with the drainage down site, of course, it's good road sand, and we just, they didn't issue that.
Travis, you you submitted your stormwater, you had paid the escrow.
I I don't know the answer to that, do you, did we get an escrow number?
It's always twenty-five hundred dollars, so.
Do you know?
I'm gonna say.
Yeah, that's why I asked, because I haven't, and it's only I I'll, I can submit it to our engineer, but the first thing they're gonna say is, they need the escrow.
It's twenty-five hundred, we'll get the escrow fee, and if you can.
I just wanna get that started, and I don't wanna hold you guys up, and the expectation, you thought the review had started it, and it hasn't, and I can't until we have the.
We'll get off the table, I'm I'm pretty sure.
I'm I'm pretty sure you didn't either, but my mind is not what it used to be, so.
And so, until I mention utility connections to uh, to water, there's a sand filter system to try and uh recapture, reuse some of that water, and of course, a little water separating, I think that's necessary to connect.
Well, what's your percentage of uh capture on the reuse?
Well, we capture a hundred percent of the water.
And you reuse?
We host in vehicles sewer system, and we we use hundreds of gallons to blast the sand and salt off the bottom of every car, inside of every car.
So that all gets, but that's all uh, out to, it's all discharged to the sewer system. With with some filter, I would imagine you catch the sediment and that kind of thing?
Yes.
And then we included the uh, the planning plan in the package, with generous uh, planning plan.
Fabulous, fabulous, love it.
Consistent with, again, with some of the other installations of apartments that you've seen. And remembering which we are the, that too. So as far as the whole process goes, of course, we're here for site plan review, the planning board, we're last in front of the board on sketch plan, in June, is an unlisted seeker action shortcut here for preliminary review, as I understand the code, public hearing is at the option of the board. Uh, and then final site plan review, so, we've obviously gotta get through stormwater review, and um Orlando mentioned the uh, state form review with DOT, which uh, you know, we'd like to have submitted after this, probably soon as she's done with her traffic study, we'll get that submitted to uh, to DOT.
How long does that take though? Roughly?
Do we have any, is there any? Cause it's just, you just.
Oh, I have nothing, there was, there was no, um.
Ten minutes ago, you were arguing that they were delightful, and then I'm gonna take it, and you're like.
They're great, they're just slow, I mean, they're not, they're not safe, they've lost six to eight weeks.
And you said it's a three-stage review?
Yeah, the first stage is usually the six to eight weeks, and it works better if um, like, if you give them a call and check in, or the town is asking about it. Like, you gotta give them a couple of weeks first.
So once you get through the first stage, then you're gonna just, you would anticipate then talking back to the board at that point? Or do you wait until later?
I don't, we wouldn't wait, we wouldn't wait for DOT, we would let you know that the traffic study is in place, and we would talk about it here. Um, and then, probably prior to the next meeting, you would have comments from DOT.
So we. But most of those comments from DOT would reflect them expressing their opinion of of the traffic impact, and then remediation plans, it isn't, it's not normally, um, yeah, no.
It, no, it doesn't ever come in with yeah, no.
I think, I think I've heard of a few instances where it's.
It's rare.
No, but I've, it's very extreme situations, so in general, they would come back with, yeah, it looks like it's gonna require changing the light, or putting in an extra turn lane, or something like that. So.
I could see a left turning into the left turn into the site.
Well, there is a left turn lane there.
Establishing my.
Yeah, I can see them possibly recommending that, but there's room there, I mean, there is room. There's still room in that road, yeah.
So you're thinking a couple of months.
And Jim, if you see over, over in at um, Colony, where we put in, you know, the only change they made to theirs happened two, oh, right and left coming out of that road with the town, so that was, we accommodated that, so.
So do you anticipate it being a couple of months from now, by the time you're back in front of us, is that what you're thinking? So I would say, so, I mean, so, we're here tonight with Florida, right? We've gotta get through stormwater with LeBerge, Orlando's gotta get the traffic study done and submit it to DOT. I'd suggest that if LeBerge has comments back for next month, you know, we'll be back with the traffic study next month, with LeBerge's comments addressed, and and continue to move forward.
I was gonna say, locally, what you can do is get your stormwater going with us. Um, the DOT thing is obviously out of our hands, but I just like to be in the loop, but the stormwater thing, we can get going.
Great. Jim, but you know, what we wanna get a feel for tonight, and and I think we have a good sense that you're you're genuinely happy with this with this layout, we obviously have to take care of stormwater and DOT, but I'm not hearing a lot of objection to, or any objection to what we've got laid out here.
The only, the only objection I have to what you had laid out was your timeline, and says that it would be uh up to the discretion of the board or whatever for publication.
You're not tomorrow.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, don't be long.
There's gonna be a.
I had to try, I had to try.
It's not, well, I was thinking, I'm sitting right by the right, it's not technically changed views.
And I think as a practical matter.
Road and stuff, so it's pretty extensive.
And I think as a practical matter, I I, you know, I think the public hearing is a foregone conclusion, but the timing of that, I think it should be such that we have some substantive comment back from DOT, so the public has something to because that's gonna be the principal issue.
I don't see a huge controversy factor, they just complain and stating so long, but the point being, it'd be nice if you had everything there, so that they do the common tyranny.
Okay, more. Let's go to the traffic. More to submit to our consultant for review.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, okay. Does our consultant have a question?
Yep.
Okay. Do you still have the same one, Peter?
Pardon?
You still have Peter, or is it somebody else now, because he's moved to somewhere?
No, we still have Peter.
Still, okay.
We just don't have a clerk yet, so. You're looking at him.
Who could have foreseen that?
Maybe I missed, so I know we're gonna submit to um, LeBerge for stormwater. Did you ask Chairman Jensen about submitting the traffic to Peter also? And is that necessary with DOT's review?
Yep.
Okay.
That's a journey.
So I will then, that that, what I'll, I'll, I will um, I'll also write a letter to Peter getting an estimate, and the reason why I say that is um, so you have to pay the fee just one time, we can combine it, the stormwater review fee and the escrow for the um, traffic.
We'll get the, we'll get the stormwater review fee, and we know what that is, we'll get that in, so we can get LeBerge's trackin' on.
Okay.
We get an estimate from Peter.
Yep.
Alright. And our our traffic engineer review shouldn't take the six to eight weeks.
No, Peter's very, he takes, he's on average about three weeks.
This is Ann, I just have one really quick question, and that is um how are, how are the number of parking spaces determined for this property?
How would this park places determine, I mean, on those for our employees? Um, so, we'll have, the rest of the part of Mayfair is a vacuum, um, self-serve, self-serve vacuums.
Vacuum is in here, so everything on the south, it's, it's reported, it's hard to have it there.
I mean, otherwise, in general, there's no reason for your customers to park the, park the car that to an outside, I don't even know why. You know, and if there is a um an incident or something they wanna come in, there's always a vacuum spot, it's open, that's what most people do.
Well, I I wouldn't it be considered, I guess, a retail use? And then it's like one parking space per hundred square feet? Again, I don't know what category applies, Jim, you know?
I I, there there's no products for sale, they're 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 selling a service.
So what what um standard applies?
Um, I I quite frankly would would recommend that you you work out a standard with the applicant based on the use in this case, because there, like I said, it's it's not a retail use in a, in a pure sense, so um, you know, the the service is being supplied here is is the the vacuum service, correct? And that's the only service beyond the car wash, which is the continuously automated function, so um, I I think you need to arrive at a comfortable number for the the number of spaces required to provide the service.
And the service is in cars, so you're not getting out of the car, so technically.
No, you are for the vacuum, you are.
Right, but that's a car wash part, so the service that you're hitting doesn't require parking.
Correct, that's my point.
Technically, if you're in queue, you're standing, you're not parked.
But the, I I have been to these where the the uh, vacuum function is a pretty busy area sometimes, at least a couple of times I've been through it, you see, there's quite a few cars that'll take advantage of that. Uh, on a couple of occasions I've been there.
But there would also be customer parking, that's two parts, so they're.
Well, then I, that's my point, yeah, as long as we have a, as long as we have dimensionally an area there that operates well for that vacuuming function, you know, cars coming in, backing out, and that kind of a thing, um that's what happens, as long as that functions properly and safely, that would be the, you know, any concern.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I was based on the plan I see in front of me, I didn't, I don't, yeah. I think you've gotta figure out how many parking spots you need for your employees, and if six is what it takes to run this.
This is actually more than usual, than what we do.
How many, how many vacuuming stations do you anticipate?
There's eleven. Seventeen or eighteen, seventeen or eighteen.
And how, you know how many? Like, I I never take advantage of the vacuum service while I go, just so you, you have a working understanding of how many percentage of cars go through go for the vacuuming, or just go for the wash?
Well, again, again, it's like when they fill up, people don't stop and wait in line, or or wait anywhere to to vacuum, I just do it at a different time.
Right, okay.
So accommodating more, you know, spaces for vacuuming just helps people, you know, vacuum their car more easily. Um, instead of backing up traffic, like on Route fifty in Saratoga as an example, you know, there's far fewer vacuum spaces in here.
How many have the new Latham one?
Maybe fourteen. So, cause it's almost like a twenty-six, yeah, similar. Cause I was trying to like this. We have five of these under way.
So does that answer your question, Ann, about the the parking for for service-related use?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
More, anything further?
Nothing.
If not, who about the fair play? You have any further questions of us?
I appreciate your time.
So it's more than a curtain round before we.
We'll see you. Alright, next week.
Yeah.
So, so Travis, you anticipate then the uh, the escrow fee in two parts, one for the stormwater, and one for the um we'll get that started, and then the second one, as soon as, as soon as I get the traffic estimate, I'll let you know.
Which is kind of before you go, my dad, I checked out your place down, very cool.
Okay, good. It's my stuff, um, very good client, I work with them uh, at a previous employer, now I can't work with them again, I would, yeah, I like them. So, we made some changes to the line, so backing up, we're here, uh don't, yeah, no, but, um we're here in uh, August, end of July, we made a sketch presentation for uh, the all-town fresh retail market, um, as you know, have the northwest intersection of Landplay, Bull Garden, or kind, right up the street from where the Hoffman Car Wash, so to answer one of the questions you guys had at that sketch review, no, we will not be building a car wash. We'll be setting on it too, and more practically, no.
Harder.
Harder. No, that wasn't everything, so, um uh, so just a a quick overview of 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 the private where it stands today. Uh, we left the meeting, uh, and we kicked off our in-earnest design on the project, we actually had the opportunity to speak with um with Mr. Rogi, the gentleman who operates Landplay or asleep, Rogi, pardon. Um, we spoke with him, and then we talked about his discernment department, you know, uh, and and, you know, he considered the uh, the comments that the board had. Um, what we did to accommodate that was, we reduced some of the width here, a little bit of the width here, um and pulled as much of the lot as far forward as we can, if you recall, we had employee parking along the back, and we had our dumpster enclosure on this side. Uh, Mr. Rogi asked if we moved the dumpster enclosure as far from there as possible. Uh, we relocated here, so it's now, I think, twenty-eight feet further from the rear property one, uh, as it was configured before. And I believe, oh, with the reduction of the employee parking lot, we managed to pull a whole bit of the service in about twenty-eight feet versus what we had before, and again, we did reduce the number of truck stalls, we had seven, we reduced it to five, and pulled them further forward as well. Uh, we relocated that employee parking lot to this this small bank here. Uh, we re- redone the traffic party movements that all still functions as as previous. Um, one of the things we talked about, uh, when we talked today was, and when we talked to the board, was infill planting along this fence, um, we have modified that on the plan that we submitted, the full, the full application, we've now provided the plant tech. Reason was, we consulted with our landscape architect, and he said, with this tall fence that you're putting here, as close to the other, the over canopy, from these mature trees as it is, with that southern exposure, those trees are not going to survive. Um, so what I did, I put a five-foot berm under this fence. Uh, and that gets the top of the fence to about eight, on average, about eight feet high off of the finished grade. The key point being, as the vehicles are swinging to the left, that's when their headlights are pointing toward that, once they've made this turn headlights are facing this way, we don't have as much concern with light gas and and light pollution as as previous, this spot is a little bit lower. Um, we also are proposing to extend that six-foot-high line of fence about a fifty feet along Landplay, and they asked us to do that as well.
So the man, that fence would be sixty above the pavement?
So there would be a transition section where it goes from the pickup fence that my client owns now, which they did install on our property, but uh, we're gonna maintain that fence, there'll be a transition section where it mounts to six feet, and then it'll be six feet along this whole side. Um, this fence will be at the natural grade, they obviously, we can't leave the berm.
But okay, so, but there's a berm, the top of the fence along the back would be at eight feet above the pavement?
Yes, the top of the fence will be.
Two-foot berm, six-foot fence?
Oh, pardon me, I missed, oh, at at the midpoint here, so we do have a drainage concern, we have to shed both ways, so this is a high point, and so, it's about eight feet from here. Um, that berm is five feet tall here, so it's about eleven feet on that part.
Okay, right.
So we maintain a set, a set elevation from the top of the berm, but because we have a high ridge line goes through this fueling pad, it drains off both sides.
So as the trucks are actually coming, the, you show.
They're pointing now, but they've got an eleven-foot-high fence.
That's right.
Yep, I circulated the plans to him as well, um, he was away for the past few days, so we haven't had, we haven't had a chance to go over the fine detail, but uh, we we do plan on talking about it. Uh, aside from that, you uh, you pressed on us to get our traffic study done, we did, and included in the application, the impact assessment was completed. Um, they, our our traffic study indicated there would be, um, the the highest increase would be a PM peak divide, I believe it's a hundred eighty-three um, for fifteen, by fifteen hour, um, and that represents about, about a hundred trips, about a hundred trips over the existing condition. Um, you, it's, you're touching on before, you can't, you don't get credit for pass-by when you're talking about a change in peak trips, so it's it's the wrong number, um.
So you're expecting a hundred people to leave their homes and come to your place during peak?
No, not leave their homes, that includes pass-by, so backing up, this is not something that I, you know, it's not my project, so I'm not I'm not jumping in when she was saying, so, I T E is a regression model, right? They look at all these projects across the country, they look at how many trips are unique to that, not unique to the project, in and out of your area. That's it, so, they apply a reduction to that number to give your pass-by, so in this case, it's a sixty percent reduction.
Okay.
So your unique trips are only forty percent of that total, right, so.
So with a hundred trips, what you're saying, is that. So with a hundred trips, what you're saying is that the unique trips or is that the total trips?
That would be total trips.
That's, that's what I thought.
Total trips. So we're not, because DOT doesn't allow you to put, take credit for pass-by when you, when you come up with, uh, the number for that, what determines whether you have to do the traffic, traffic impact assessment.
That's right. Basically.
Right.
Now you're looking for the impact.
Well, DOT is only concerned about how many cars are going in on the drive, they don't care where they're coming.
Right.
They don't care if it's a new trip from the home or someone driving by the road, but they're looking at the actual movement in and out of the driveway. So I tend not to get into the, the only time we ever really address, um, you know, I've had to really address the difference between pass-by and unique trips is, like with the CDT A and not C, uh, the CTC, when they're doing like mitigation fees for their trips, right? The pass-by trips don't count, so you get that reduction and that benefits you, um. But other than that, no, with the wrong numbers, you know, whether they came from home or whether they were driving by on their way to work, it doesn't matter when people are trying to get in and out of your driveway.
Right.
You know.
That was, that was the point, the, like with the previous project, was the unique wasn't important when it came to where the people were going to be turning left.
That's right.
In fact, actually, it would have been, at the peak hour, that would have been the traffic situation for event of the pass-by.
Right.
Not the unique.
Right.
In your case, I, I, when you said a hundred, I was like, wow, okay, so that's a lot more than I would have expected.
Well, that's a hundred new. You're right, I get what you're saying. I would not expect it, so if it's a hundred trips that were unique, it would mean that during the peak hour, fifty different people got up and left their house to go here for service.
Right.
Highly unlikely.
So with that in mind, during the peak hour.
Yep.
Are, if people are going to enter your business, they're going to be turning left?
Yes.
If they're heading home and they were already heading north and they had to turn left to enter your business, when they leave, they're going to need to turn left?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going somewhere with this, believe me.
I, 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 I have an idea, I have an idea where you're going.
At the last meeting, I mentioned that it might not be a good idea to have the entrance and exit direction.
I, I, and, and.
And I see we did, so we must have thought about it and decided that didn't work with our plan.
I'll, I'll, I'll be frank, okay, if you're straight, it's not going to change. So how are the widths of our driveways, is determined by the truck turning movement?
Okay.
Right? So it's going to be, if we go to one way, it would be a matter of signage dictating it only. We couldn't do some funky or choppy thing, because then the trucks can't get in and out. Um, and then it just becomes a matter of signage anyway. So if we're going to do signage saying, no truck, no truck entrance here, trucks use other entrances, which we did include on that plan, but it is on my application to DOT, and I'll, I'll show you that. So if we're limiting the truck traffic here only, it's by signage, and if it's one-way, it's by signage also. So we were going to, we're amenable to it, we wanted to see what DOT had to say about it.
Okay.
I, and that, that was really ridiculous.
And somebody who used to live on Route nine and, and used to turn, turn left on Route nine, in the morning, I can tell you that the left turn on Route nine looked like New Jersey, took a right, down the road.
And turned around.
And pulled into somebody's business, you came back up to him, I drove, two rides to make the left.
Yep.
So what I'm seeing here is people are going to be coming for Jerry Chursby, that this is a beautiful place, and people don't want to stop there, they're going to stop, okay? So people are going to come, they're going to turn left into your business, then they're going to want to turn right, and then it's going to turn left to keep, continue on, and they're going to be like, oh God, and they're going to stack up in your business, okay?
Yep.
So, and, and I love the, the fact that you've got rid of the two-hundred feet of.
Open, open.
Because I see, I see five, six cars at a time take the left and then make it.
Right.
Okay, this is, and what about, they're going to stand up on.
Jim, I absolutely respect your, your position on this, and, and he, and, and honestly, Tom doesn't really have an issue with that either. You know, um, his, you know, my, my marching orders when I left was, don't change anything major right now, let's see what DOT has to say, if it comes back, and.
If it's just signage, then you're at the middle of people following signage, and it becomes an issue if it was supposed to be one-way, and somebody pulled in and hit somebody. I understand that, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how to make it so that your business works, because I think Tom and Craig too, if people pull in there and it takes them twenty minutes to get out, then it's going to affect your business too.
Well, I mean, do you know how this works? I know how this works, this is where I stop on my way to work.
Exactly, you're right.
You know, I'm right there right now myself, so. I mean, there are some, some things to have the proximity to be loyal with, you know, when I do seven. It provides relief from traffic, and it's, you're lucky enough to solve all traffic, is it? Is, is, right, so again, you know, you know. We, you know, I, I, we are, we are very amenable to that, but again, Tom's approach was, let's just get everything in damn, we know what your opinion is, we know what DOT, you know, let's see what DOT has to say, and we'll wait and we'll get that.
This is ten times better than these existing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, starting from that, I'll take anything there.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, but again, I, it's, it's not, it's not something we're going to bite tooth and nail over, to be honest with you. If, if, if this approach was, look, if it's just signage and that's the only change, then let's, let's provide the signage that we need to make an agreement to do it when it's, when it's, you know, when we have all the info, all, everyone's waiting. Um, so backing up to that, you did see our, our, uh, traffic assessment, I submitted the stage one and two combined in the expedited permit to DOT. Jim, I'll send that to you, that to you. Um, I hoped to get an informal sit-down with Guy Tesco, he'd been amenable to that in the past, but that was before Tina Crowley came on, and before Tina Crowley subsequently left. And now the new guy, whose name escapes me, um, he's being onboarded and Guy is not, or like I said, for an informal of me, because he's given this zone to the new guy for permitting, it's not, and Guy's not handling this specifically anymore. Um, so I submitted the stage one and two this morning in expedited fashion, and I'll get that over to the guys, uh, to you, Jim.
Did, did you get my, um, the confirmation of the escrow?
Yes, and Tom was out for the last couple of days, last week, he sent that check out this morning.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure you had your mechanics.
No, yeah, I, I, you know, yeah. Peter's going to look at this as well, is that what that is?
Oh, no, I, that, that's for stormwater, the traffic is a whole nother thing if you want to do that.
Well.
Okay, so that's a second fee for a third-party traffic review, I have to get an estimate from our provider, and I will send it to you when I get it.
Okay, no problem. And, um, you know, as far as that goes, you, you know, the initial response, I did send out my sketch plan, you know, and said, this looks great, you know, he said, I, you know, I don't have trojans, so I don't really say so much about it, but it looks great, I can't imagine having a new trauma. He did bring up that the product, the proximity to Landplay is an issue, and as a new driveway, that's not something they need to permit, but it exists, so, you know, they're going to take what they can get as better. Um, if they can get better, that's what it really boils down to. But again, that's informal until I see something where I go.
And the existing driveway is even closer to, uh, Landplay?
Yes, it is, that's true. Uh, I talked a little bit, and again, this brings up one of the, the issue, the issue we have aside, um, stormwater. Uh, currently, the site is serviced by a bunch of intermittently functioning driveways, they require annual cleaning. Um, there's a lot of, you know, impacted gravel, dust, sediment all over the site. It's just not a clean site, the driveways don't perform over time. Uh, we're removing them all, uh, with the exception of three of them here on the corner of Landplay. Uh, the issue being, Landplay has no drainage, um, and frankly, the Route nine has no drainage. Um, we are not interested in treating all of the stormwater for Route nine and sizing this thing. And, and frankly, a private landowner does not have the obligation to do that, we've got small ridges here. Um, those ridges are set, um, so that if there really is a flood, our site can take some of the flow, but it won't move in the building. But generally speaking, um, as I said, we're leaving those to the benefit of Landplay or Boulevard, and they'll continue to maintain them. Um, and if they do, our stormwater model does anticipate those surging. If they surge in high-flow events, if they fill up, they'll spill down on our site, drain through a catch basin here, drain into our underground attention system. So for the hundred-year rainfall event, we do expect that our, uh, our drainage system will take off-site flow. For the lower events, we don't expect that it will, and I, I think that's a fair way to approach it, because that's the natural drainage pattern today. Um, the drainage system is sized infiltrating the entirety of the hundred-year rainfall event, we have no doubt of that. So normally, you know, if you do a pond or a, you know, something underground, um, you want to safely pass that through a control outlet structure with a series of, you know, orifics, so you let it drain out to the, to the road, and then you close your, close drainage system. Obviously, there isn't one. Um, so you anticipate, I understand correctly, you will, you will be able to handle everything that falls on your property along with some additional. Yes. From, yes. We, our, our stormwater modeling includes the entire parking lot here and all of Landplay, a portion of, not a portion, um.
For a hundred years, Tom.
For the hundred, actually.
Yeah, are you doing any kind of physical break between you and Fitzgerald, or?
Um, this, this is the, pardon me, the curb here is high, and it does drain slightly back toward Fitzgerald. Um, we've talked about, and I talked to Tom, and I talked to my team, you know, we do a bunch of QA QC and, and design iteration. Um, our, our feeling is, because we're providing so much more grass than is there now, and flow is basically going to have a property line, that's going to infiltrate. Um, it, it's reduced to about fifteen percent of the existing.
I was going to say, you have a very small catchment.
It ends up being a really small catchment, it's just this small bit over here, that grass is going to be more than adequate to handle that. We really don't want to rely on a stormwater system.
The underlying soils are.
To benefit our neighbors.
The underlying soils are pretty sandy, right?
Very sandy, but, uh, the, I'll be frank, we, we did the, uh, the infiltration test early on, and I got forty-eight feet an hour. I could not dump water in that whole fast enough, it was flat down a lot to the riverbank, once, yeah, it was, a high gallon bucket was gone as fast as I could hold it in a quarter.
Except, except when there's frost in the ground and the snow melts in the spring.
Yeah.
And then swimming pool time.
Well, the, the idea is.
My question is, would it be wise to add some type of, uh, storm? Uh, uh, yeah, it's something that, that frost.
In, in this area?
Yeah, not elsewhere, I mean, I, I haven't looked at your script totally at this point, so you probably already dealt with it, but for that area, just a couple of spots to make sure on those days, when you get that late winter rainstorm with a foot of snow on the ground and the ground's still frozen.
I'll talk to Tom about it, there's, it is one of those things, I'm not, it's not, I can build something into the topography. I could depress this and give it a little bit of capacity, but, you know, I mean, it's not something we want to record in the stormwater design, because I don't see them desiring in perpetuity the maintenance of a stormwater system that benefits their neighbor.
Well, I, I was just going to say, to, to be clear on this, I'm only suggesting that to handle the water that you just mentioned that that green area runs towards Fitzgerald.
Um, well, no, it, 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 it does slightly, sure, I mean, it's less than a half a percent.
I'm only suggesting that to handle the, the capacity of your, well, to another property, not their flow to yours, it's not your responsibility to handle theirs.
No, I, we also don't want to be bad neighbors, and we also don't want to cause a flood where it wasn't a flood, so we don't have things considered.
I don't think it would cause a flood where there was, where there wasn't any, but, okay, so, but, no, it's just something you can just take a look at.
It would be simple enough to, to grade this with a little white as opposed, you know, normally our landscape areas want to build up a little bit, I can grade it down a little bit as opposed to up a little, up slightly, swell it slightly instead of a, a berm, and we can look at that. There, you know, there's another thing that DOT may ask that I'm ready for, um, I didn't submit a drainage shell, which is, you know, DOT, when you do the stage one and two, there's a qualifier for what, for what gets them into reviewing your stormwater design. Um, it's an increase of two thousand square feet of impervious cover in the right of way, this does not meet the requirement. We have a reduction of sixteen hundred square feet in the right of way, there's no call for a drainage shell, but.
Technically, because of the fact that Route nine sits a foot or two above your property, it's probably got to be reviewed from another direction, I.
Yeah.
I mean, in general, Route nine sheets to.
To the property.
The property.
And they don't provide any drainage. I, what I anticipate, I might need to do is provide curb rates.
Right.
Into this island, but I'm going to wait to see what folks at DOT have to say about that first.
Yeah.
Um, because again, we don't really want to have an outage for maintenance. Do you have the.
It would mean that your, your stormwater is highly unlikely to run after.
It will not run out.
Okay, there are.
My model for the sizing on this is thirty inches an hour.
Right.
Okay, that's the infiltration rate, we're modeled thirty inches an hour. My actual test indicated about five inches a minute.
Right.
So we're way, because we're way oversizing this thing, the other thing is, it's large enough, we're well below the bottom, it's well below ground, uh, well below free stuff.
Right.
So it's not for all winter.
Okay.
You know, um, the stormwater is one of the bigger pieces here, I, you know, I, and Tom did ask me to make a change on that as well. You know, we're using a store tech chambers that shows with orange arches, right? And I'm very comfortable with SC seven forty, it's the three-foot rise arch. Um, most of the sites in the capital district in New York are generally really head limited, not a lot of space to work with.
G P S.
So it's drained terribly everywhere, and there's a high water table everywhere. Frankly, all the good sites have been built on it, so, you know, you end up with this really low, low clearance. Um, I can go to larger chambers on this, and he asked me to do it, um, since there's no outlet to be concerned about, who probably will. Um, in a smaller footprint, get significantly more capacity at a bit less cost per, so that's probably where we're going to end up doing. Um, but all in all, so, as I was correct, all the good sites have been built on, except on Route nine.
On Route nine.
I want to get that on the record.
I, I, I.
This is what started on, but you got.
No, no, I, it's just one of those general challenges, you know, if you're working in a, like, a capital district, and you didn't leave Albany, or, or good sites in general. Generally, no, but all the sites are counting, and that's what makes the job interesting, honestly, um. So I think I covered the big ones, we had some discussion about our alt-table being inaccurate, that's been modified, that's been addressed. Um, I do feel that we're still adequately served in your parking, um, we're in the fifties for stall count on this, it's in excessively counted with compositions by department stalls.
I, I do want to say, uh, I appreciate what you did in the back there, you know, with the, uh, added dimension in the rear for buffer, uh, removing the parking and the, the berming and all that, those are all positive steps and taking a couple of the larger spaces out, those are all.
I think whatever we can do to keep places shining into their backyards, I think is, is the key there.
Uh, we had talked about when you first came in, you know, over the parking, and, oh, I don't.
That, we're absolutely standing by that, yes.
Yeah, I just didn't, I noticed that you have a, you have a plan for signings, or, I didn't see any.
I, I, we have the standard sign, our standard sign table on there, that's all that's there right now.
Yeah, I just didn't see any, any.
I, I didn't have that. We'll get that in that piece, so. We will definitely get that, and again, that's not, um, I guess I should probably have that before public hearing, I would, that makes sense, or, uh, to get that in the plan.
Definitely, we have plans to.
I, I kind of like people to tell, the public that give me input. I don't forget that, you know, tell me what you want, it's not within reason, you know. No, we'll, we'll, we'll include that screen and, and specific signage. Um, and again, that, that's not the business model, and I was over there earlier today, before I came here, there were fourteen trucks parked there, four of them were running. Yeah, that's.
Yes, very much.
That's not going to continue, that doesn't work for their business models. Well, there's no term, you know, if we had thirty parking stalls, they'd want, they want to stay there all the time, but they want to be able to get people in and out, they want to sell fuel and sell sandwiches, and if people that are sitting in these parking stalls for two hours at a shop, they can't turn over customers.
So the, the business model, the, the concept of the parking stalls is to keep the trucks loading up at the fuel pumps, to get them fueled and then move on to go eat your sandwich, or.
And then, yep.
And which is also a great point.
But it is not a trust, you know, we, it's, it's not a, they're, they're, they are building one, but it is not. If it works elsewhere, um, but.
Is there, is there in the building dining?
Um, it's.
Couple of.
What is typical for a convenience store with, with food preference items? Yep.
And we can, we're, we're.
There's no, there's no tables, there's no table service.
There is no waiting service.
Okay.
No, it would be, it would be at your leisure, more like a non-influence than.
Yeah.
So I guess as far as that goes, what we can accomplish there, and we're further along, you want to have comments back on the stormwater design before setting a public here?
That's up to the board.
Is that generally how you, you handle that?
Yeah, generally, I'd at least to get that first, uh, uh, generation of comments, you know, back, so we know where things stand.
Okay, well, I did speak with Phil, um, he told me there is, Phil Boulair, I remember, he told me. Okay. Well, I did speak with Phil. Um, he told me here, it's Phil Paul there at the, he told me here explicitly what he would like to see on this. Um, and I should overshoot on it. So, um, you know, aside from crunching the numbers and the math, uh, what we're showing for, uh, practices are what he asked for. So we're showing redundant pretreatment, the way the state requires for any hospital infiltrations is one of the issues with the fueling station. Um, so we're providing it is on our, on our drainage, or ready to drainage plan. Um, a snout product which gives you, um, some storage for hydrocarbons in the structure itself in the case of small spells of Ra. Uh, we are providing down to two downstream defenders, one for the product. It's essentially two drainage systems with one for front and one for back. Um, uh, basically a, a downstream defender, a hydrocarb separator here and one about here. Uh, so those are two treat, pretreatments. Uh, we are building out what they, what, um, Storm Tech calls their isolator rows. So the first row of your infiltration practice, it takes your first flush, it's wrapped with fabric, right? So that you capture all those sediments in the high flow events that spills into the other chambers. So that's three pretreatment practices that the state sanctions as opposed to the two that's required. Um, and, and it's, and then again, it's.
On, on the infrastructure side, I don't know if you had a chance to, um, uh, interface with our water superintendent yet. If you haven't, I'll get you his email contact information and you need to get with him right away because as a practical matter, he's, um, retiring and I think 29th of September is his last day. So we, I, I want to get you that right away tomorrow.
So we need to get a letter from him, basically?
Well, I, I just want you to, the dialogue with him, he has very, um, specific standards for the types of, um, metering and valving and things like that. He wants to have employed.
Mr. Fitch?
Yes, yes.
Um, yeah, I spoke with him about record drawings and record manning so far. So he's not totally in the dark that we're, we're doing this, but I'll, I.
He has Mueller valves and I forget the, um, the meter, but I have it written down.
And this brings up a point you mentioned. I don't have hydrant. I'll need an hydrant.
Yeah.
We, we don't show on him. I need an hydrant.
So those are things you want to go over with him because I know he has a specific.
I have trouble for fire. I need an hydrant.
He has a specific type of hydrant that he likes to, you know, use in that kind of thing. So I got to get his information.
So right now I'm waiting to hear what DOT has said. Hopefully we get word back from them relatively soon. And, uh, I have some, you know, I'm putting this project down. I'm putting it down for a bit, waiting for some comments, then do some work and then get another set lines up.
Will you do that? And get comments from our driver and solve them. Stormwater.
Is there any change in the, the signage as far as the, the highway sign for this? Other than just changing the name or something?
Right now, so I hand it off all your sign rights, all the sign rights to your signage vendor. They actually have a sign, a, a, you know, regional contract with a sign vendor. Um, Tom, and, and, and because the permit, the sign permit stands aside from the site line of approval.
Yes.
My promise from them at this point is that it's a compliant sign package. They haven't, we're going to occupy the same place.
That's where I was.
Yes, the same location with a compliant sign.
Okay.
But they haven't provided me with a sign package.
Yeah, I don't have to see the sign. Just want to.
I don't want to. No, I'll, I'll come up here and go to ZVA if they want to not, not do a compliant package, but that, I don't expect that.
You just work here.
It's the same show.
Yeah, no, it's the same, same location. There's an established location. There is no reason to change it. You know, we don't want to have conflicts with the trees that we're riding and.
But it now, it now falls in that side.
Because we can't.
But, but it's now in that, it's not in the.
This, this actually is where it is.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's not in the, the big lot line driveway.
Oh, right. So we're just going to build a grass island.
Around that location, yes.
Okay, so pardon me. Yeah, yeah. So we're building a grass island around that location sign. We're getting that one out and putting everyone in.
It's not the sign driver situation, even more compliant, which is great. We always have this one.
Uh, we did do lighting, um, and I had in touch on this. Um, so they work with a national vendor for lighting products, a company called Redlander. They do the limitations. Um, they did, uh, I'm, I'm breaking this up because it's something we talked about. We are showing two towards rear. They are further from the rear of the parcel than the previous iteration was because we pulled the whole project back. Um, and of course, you know, they're using all of the, uh, standards for cutoffs and, and the like.
Yeah, they can direct that really well away from.
I, I don't expect that to be the issue and frankly, it can't be.
You, you will be, you will, you will be providing a, a, a elimination plan.
Yes, I, I, there was one in that, there should have been one in there with a, with, it didn't have ISO lines ahead, uh, just a full candle written.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
But yeah, that was on the last page of the package.
That's fine.
What are the, what are the proposed business hours?
Point four.
That's what I thought. That's fine. That's why I was just curious.
Uh, this is Ann. I have a question. I'm sorry I missed the meeting where you first, um, appeared.
No.
Um, but the, um, documents I saw earlier indicated that you were not going to be hooking up the public sewer. Is that correct?
Well, it's kind of, the, the notes are a bit odd because we're showing a proposed connection to a sewer that doesn't exist yet. Our intention is to connect to the new sewer once it is constructed. But, and frankly, the project isn't going to start construction until that sewer is done, so.
I'm, I'm told or ahead of schedule.
That's, and I did send a message over to Don Rose like you suggested I do. He said, I can't give you an exact date. We have an obligation to have the project completed by June of 22. And we're well ahead of schedule right now. That's all. That's all he was, that's all he gave me. So, but my client's asking the same thing. There's a huge backlog, back order in, uh, tanks right now. Like there's, everything is behind. So they want to get their order in for these tanks as soon as possible, but they're not going to put the money upfront for them until they know when they can start construction. So, um, they're looking at that as their construction start date, when they can rip the ground up for the sewer. Um.
So the, the answer is you're connected?
Yes, we definitely. I've sized E1, E1 rider system. You know, we want to work with Will Stradlin and see where it's what the, uh, it's what, um, the verge of fullness was going to be expected with E1 system. Um, so it's sized for our daily flow and we've shown on the utility plan right in the back with, uh, the green track.
Okay.
And we're good. Any other questions or comments? What's that?
Sorry about the orange square.
Yeah. I, I don't actually, um, if it's been accessible and I've got my questions answered. So, um, right now, you know, again, as I said, I have a holding pattern. I want to collect the comments that I get from, from everyone.
So you would at the next meeting you appear at, I'll expect a public hearing to be set at that next meeting, correct?
Uh, that's what you've indicated is the, is the path for me.
Alright.
Report.
Traffic consultant chain firms.
To my knowledge, no. He's, um, well, that might, you're with VPI, aren't you?
Yeah.
Peter Faith?
He's, yeah, I mean, he's semi retired.
Cause he's a guy we usually use.
Well, so Mike, Mike Misowski did our trip, our trip jet and Mike, Mike has taken over as the, the head of our traffic department. Um, he was a DOT guy for, for his career and he's finishing out consulting.
We might have to do the reverse here or have a, a Creighton or, um, uh, uh,
What's what's true?
The, the, we, we just had here BG.
Alana, BHP and.
BHP.
That's where Wendy went.
Yeah, we might have to go to them for an estimate on this one.
What's true is you can hear the applicants, granted, clearly.
Right. Yeah, that's what I mean. He is. He's semi retired, but he's still, I think there's a, there's a risk of a conflict there.
Absolutely there is. So if you.
I want to go to another provider.
Peter comes in periodically and he helps us with marketing. I think that's the, the major scope.
He's still kind enough to do, um, you know, our, we asked him as a third-party reviewer.
No, I mean, he's around. He's not running the department.
No, but he's, I mean, the extent of the work he does is fine for us.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's a great spot. I'm going to be a different person, so.
Yep, that's a good point.
But no, that's fine. And, you know, this is again, a turnaround spare, right? We do, we do review for, uh, for, for our competitors and they do it for us and.
Well, it, it's always been, historically, it's been a small pond that you draw from anyhow. So it always goes back and forth.
No, I'm, I'm contracted. Actually, TGI is the first firm I've worked for that does, that we do traffic inside. All the other places I've worked, we had to go outside for it, so.
Okay.
All, all the way. Thank you.
Yeah, I did, uh, I ran out. I got Peter Beckham's car. He's already going for it now, so.
Oh, awesome. That bad. Excellent. You don't have to ask me anymore. He's going to wish you had given this to me.
Right? I wish they could make the font a little smaller.
So, yeah, I was just looking at you, but it would have been better if you made your car so it could be read by someone. One thing I wanted to mention to you, Jim, is, is I spoke with somebody from the U.S. Postal Service. And a part of that email I sent to you was, we have a project in front of us that, that is heading towards its final approvals. And it dawned on me, we have no mail thing on it at all. Okay? And my understanding from the, wherever postal services, they are not going to be doing any home delivery.
Right. So I, I think anything that has that kind of, uh, interface with postal delivery, you've got to look at the idea of, um, kiosks and, and.
Right. But the question I guess I have is, I mean, we would be looking at the sighting of those kiosks. But do we need to now send applicants to the postal service to talk to them each time along with referring to the water and, you know, all the other people would refer?
You mean for location or for, for addresses?
Not for addresses, for location for a kiosk kind of thing. Because the one that comes to mind is.
Yeah, the, the short answer is yes.
Because the one that comes to mind is Coby Farms and that's not just like, there's an entrance to this development. There's, there's five or six, so.
Well, the other one we got, um, next Monday is Harrison Avenue Apartments. Another one, they'll need a, you know.
I mean, all the apartments have had them and, and Arrow had S J M had kiosks also.
Correct.
Okay, but it dawned on me that Coby Farms did. So that's why I sent the email and said, maybe they, before they come in front of us, I don't want it to hold up.
Yeah, and where it gets a little tricky is, you know, wintertime access and plowing because the one that they, uh, there was, there was some complaints on, um, oh, uh, used to be the building inspector here. Now he's a builder. What's the name?
Greenwood.
Huh?
Greenwood.
Greenwood, yeah. The subdivision he did, uh, people were having to wade through like eight-foot plowers to get to their mail by virtue of where the kiosks is located.
Yeah, see, that's, yeah. So anyways, I just, I wanted to mention that because.
So in the design, if we can get, you know, a design that works in this climate and is discussable and all that.
Well, and I asked him, I said, so what do we do with, like, because I'm facing, the postal service is delivering a lot of.
Mustn't leave them there.
And, um, he said that they should either have half the kiosk drop box, all right, or they'll deliver mail right to your door.
Oh, okay.
But they won't deliver the mail.
The regular mail, maybe, maybe. Yeah, okay. All right. And we can start to anticipate that. Thank you, thank you, guys.
Post to adjourn?
Second. That's the one they need when they're checking, you just don't inhale and say we're done.
Was it a random turn? Was it a second from John?
Yes.
Was it a random second discussion? If not, all those will never hide.
Aye, aye.
Good night, everybody online. Good, good hearing from you.
Thanks, Jim.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
Night. Miss you guys.